So, okay. Looks like everybody is here. It is four o'clock and on September 12th and 2023, and we will call the Kerrville City Council Workshop to Order. Do we have anyone to speak, Shelley? All right, we will go on to number two A, Health Insurance. Kim?
Hello, good evening or good afternoon. I'm gonna wait on my presentation real quick. What we're gonna talk about today is hopefully getting council approval to offer future retirees the right to purchase health insurance under the city's group plan upon retirement. So why would we offer this benefit? This would allow eligible employees who want or need to retire to do so without a gap in insurance coverage. Some people we have that are maybe 62, 63 years old, still working full-time, and they have two years before they reach Medicare age. And so this would allow them to go ahead and retire if they want or need to and continue on the city's health insurance and pay 100% of the cost, but then go ahead and retire and wait for the two years to fill the gap until they reach Medicare age. This would be a monetary savings for the retiree of 2% of the total premiums based on the plan selection because when someone leaves employment, you're eligible for COBRA coverage. And COBRA coverage is the full cost of the premiums plus a 2% administration fee. And so if we offer retiree health insurance with our group plan, all they pay is 100% of the premiums, and it's not called COBRA coverage. It's just a separate group in our plan that's called retirees, and they wouldn't have to pay the 2%. It would be minimal financial impact to the city. The employee who is eligible to retire is currently covered by our health insurance. Therefore, they're already part of our loss ratio that I talk about. The retiree pays 100% of the premiums. The city has no cost there. The city does not make any contribution to the cost of the coverage for the retiree or their eligible dependents because their eligible dependents would also be eligible for the retiree coverage. So what is an eligible retiree? The definition is based on the qualifications or the requirements of the Texas municipal retirement system. So an employee who qualifies under the requirements of TMRS to receive retirement benefits. And that is age 60 with five years of service with TMRS or 20 years of service with TMRS. So for instance, I have not been here for 20 years, but I do have 10 years with a previous city, and I have 16 years here, 16 and a half years here. And so I would be eligible to retire under TMRS, or I am eligible to retire under TMRS. So it doesn't have to actually be 20 years of service with Kerrville. The benefit would be a one-time offering on the last day worked prior to retirement. So the person, the retiree, would have to make the decision on the last day they worked. They couldn't go off and come back a month later and go, oh yeah, I wanna go ahead and take the health benefits. They would have to make that decision on the last day that they worked. And anyone who has retired from the city prior to the effective date of this policy is not eligible. So the policy would become eligible on 10/1/2023. And so anyone who retires 10/1/2023 and after would be eligible for this. And they're only entitled to purchase continued health benefit coverage until the retiree or spouse is eligible for group health benefits through another employer or the retiree becomes eligible for Medicare. So if we have a male employee who retires and his wife maybe works for Peterson, is a nurse at Peterson or something, and they have health coverage, the employee, the retiree, would have to go to the Peterson Health Insurance and could not stay on our insurance. And then, of course, I gave you the example of the Medicare. They would be eligible for medical, dental, and vision only. And it's the retiree and cover dependents on the last day worked. So they couldn't add any new dependents to their coverage. And again, it would be eligible retirees who retire on or after 10/1/2023. So Chapter 175 of the Texas Local Government Code states that once we reach a population of 25,000, and that's not what we're doing right now, but once we reach a population of 25,000, Chapter 175 gives employees the right to purchase continued health benefit coverage at retirement. So the retiree eligibility would be automatic at this point. So what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to fast-forward a little bit and go ahead and offer it beginning 10/1/2023. We are close to the population of 25,000, but council has to make that decision, and it hasn't been made yet. So all this stuff about Chapter 175 doesn't matter at this point. The only reason I bring it up is that our policy was written, and the Resolution 31/2023, if it's approved, we would add a new policy to the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, and the policy will be written or is written in compliance with Chapter 175. So therefore, once we meet the 25,000 population, we would not need to amend the policy. It's already in our policy book and meets the qualifications.
Kim, how close are we right now to that 25,000? I mean, we're over 24,000 right now, correct?
I think we are.
We are.
24 what?
24,578.
Okay, so less than 500 people.
79, 80, 81, 82.
Yes, so less than 400 people, and this is mandatory anyway.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just wanting to accelerate it. We have a couple of employees that need to retire, and so they've asked about it. I did talk to the chiefs. You know, we have a hard time recruiting police and fire. And we are, I'm not even gonna say it, that we're staffed right now. I'm not saying it. Anyway, we have, I did ask the chiefs, would this cause a mass exodus in the police and fire? And they said no. They know of, I think they know of one each that might retire, so. With that, I'll answer any other questions that you might have. And what's going to happen? This is just a presentation right now, but on your regular agenda at 6:00 PM, there is an item for action, and I would ask that you would approve it at that time. Do you have any questions for me?
How do we usually adopt the population? Is that usually through our budget when we say the number in there?
I have to defer to Mike, I don't know.
We've not done it since I've been here.
Okay.
You all would do it, probably you would do it, or y'all would do it via resolution based on, you know, some evidence. You know, and you could do it with the number of water meters we have, service meters we have, census, a lot of cities wait for census. But you don't have to. What I'm saying is you just take some sort of evidence, and you make that finding.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, Public Safety Facility Update. Exciting, exciting.
It is exciting, and I would be more excited. But I have a small update to give you today rather than a large update. You see, we don't have representatives from Burn Construction here today. And so here tonight to tell you that we're gonna have them come back at the end of the month in the September 26 meeting. So where are we? So we have given them our wish list. All of us departments that are gonna be out there, what we hope to see in that facility. And they have taken that wish list, and they've turned that into budget numbers. And so we received those budget numbers, and we said, okay, that's a few percent over where we need to be. And so we've asked them to value engineer some of the things that they have in there and give us their advice on a couple of areas that we see some savings. We've taken a hard look at it and said, hey, are there some things in here that we feel like we could make some modifications to that are low-hanging fruit? And so we're at that stage right now. So we've got a meeting set up for tomorrow with Burn. We've had meetings every two weeks with them. And so we didn't wanna bring anything to you that wasn't something that we could offer and say, hey, this is, we're gonna have this product at least. And so based on what we have right now, we gotta do a little bit of work, tweak a few things. And so we feel confident that we'll be able to bring this back to you at the end of the month, and we'll be able to start moving forward with the design development phase. And with that, I will turn it over, and I'm sorry, I don't have more answers to your questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is now a good time to ask for what we would consider, or at least me personally would consider, a need versus a want so that that message could be conveyed to the powers that be that are dropping these numbers? Because I would really, really like to see that memorial stay.
Well, so I can assuage that because the space needs are not an issue. And the memorial space has been defined. And we know that there is a group of volunteers who are putting money together to fund that, so that's not an issue. So the 75 square foot space that is outlined there, I've been a little reluctant to kinda say, here's exactly what that footprint's gonna look like for you because we obviously haven't finalized all the details of that. But roughly speaking, none of that's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
And so we discussed at the last presentation the inclusion of the city council chambers, right, into the assessment. And so we have the city council chambers, we have municipal court, we have IT, we have public safety, we have police, and we have fire administration. And so at this point, we've told Burn, we still would like to have all those things, right? Come back to us and tell us how we can accomplish all that, right? And they're gonna come back, and they're gonna give us their opinion, and we'll have to reassess and see where we're at. But we feel confident we'll be able to bring you a presentation on the 26th that will showcase where we are and where we think we can go.
All right, well, I was expecting pictures and diagrams and all kinds of stuff today.
You get me, and that's it. I have flamingos on my tie, and it helps.
Okay, so you think the meeting at the end of the month will have some more?
That's our hope, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Are you confident that everything else is on track? Or is there something else we need to be aware of?
No, I mean, you know, again, we put in the wish list of things, right? And this is no different. Nobody is concerned either on Burn's side or the owner's representative's side from Freeze and Nichols about where we stand. So we still feel confident.
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
And next is you get to.
I get to just stay.
You get it again. So two C, Lennar Windridge Development Discussion.
So as you all know, we have been talking about the Windridge development for quite a while. Martin, can you pull up that lot layout? There you go. We've had quite a few discussions about it. They've been through planning and zoning. Planning and zoning made recommendations. We have all had some executive session discussions about tweaks that they could have to their product. They've turned around and made those modifications. We have asked them for certain requirements, and I think they were able to meet quite a few of those. And I wanted to bring Lennar in. And so here tonight, we have Clifton Karim, who is the development side for Lennar and has been handling negotiations with them thus far. And wanted to bring them together for y'all to talk through questions. I know we have a discussion about tours, and we had a tours meeting set up and have postponed that. And I think there was just some clarifications that we needed as staff, and we figured it was gonna be best to have Lennar here to answer some of those questions for y'all and give us a path to move forward. So with that, Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to Clifton, and he can speak a little bit about their proposal, how the current project is going, and their thoughts on the future, okay?
Okay. Clifton, would you be more comfortable coming to the podium?
Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't you do that? We'll put you in the hot seat, yes.
Yeah.
Brenda, we do have visuals, and we are ready, by the way.
Thank you. I was hoping you would be.
In case I need to phone a friend, Pablo is here. And then also Daniel Ortiz, who is an attorney helping us put the agreement documents together. So any technical questions, I may have to defer to Daniel.
Should we start with the presentation, or what are we starting?
I do not have any presentation. I'm happy to have a Q and A. I can tell you more about what's going on, and that's probably a good idea. You know, Ridgeland, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we kind of, I think that's what we kind of expected, so.
Okay, well, yeah. So Ridgeland next door is going well. We've opened for sales. Every home that we have available to purchase has been sold. And so we're very encouraged by the demand. We're very excited about taking that, you know, same recipe over to the Windridge project. Little bit different circumstances there. The city doesn't own the Windridge land. It's owned by the university. And so we've been working with Michael and city staff to come up with a way to bring that same price point over to the Windridge development. And so that's come together in two separate agreements, one with the EIC, and then with the proposed tours that we were talking about today. In those conversations, as Michael indicated, there were some things that came up, most of which was a non-issue. I think one of the big things that came up was potentially investors buying in the Windridge development. And so Michael said, come on over, let's talk about it. And so here we are. So happy to answer any questions about the agreement, the project, the Ridgeland project, investors.
My question relates to the Ridgeland project, and you have to understand I'm getting my information from Facebook, so there's that. But there's a lot of people that are complaining that the price point for these homes started at 185 to 250, and now there's not a single home that's 250. It's all over that. Can you discuss, can you give me some clarification on that?
We'll just stand up here and fact-check these things. Sounds like a plan. So the way that the original agreement was set up was that the product would be between that 185 and 227, and the 227 being the cap based on HUD's defined cap for single-family homes. That would be in that attainable range. And in the agreement, it also, like, the very next sentence in that is that that will be adjusted each year as HUD adjusts that number.
Okay.
Unfortunately, from the time that we started to now, the world went crazy. And so that number for this year in 2023 is $275,000. So it's staggering how rapidly that number has gone up from 227 to 275. And I don't foresee it going down. So hopefully, it doesn't rise as rapidly as it has. But they base it on the area median income.
Okay.
And so as that number goes up, they also adjust the value of those homes.
So is that the high end? Is there still a low end, or are they starting now at 275?
That I will turn over to this gentleman. Originally, it has to meet that 275 or below.
Okay.
We get our statements back from them.
Yes, and so there's the sticker price, and then there's the net price. And if you look at that Ridgeland agreement, it defines what the net sales price is. It's the price net of any incentives that is coming out of Lennar's pocket. So there's really three different buckets that are the incentives that we're currently offering. The big one right now is rate buy-down. So a rate buy-down, there's also closing cost assistance as many of these home buyers do not have the liquidity for an outright purchase for the closing costs. So we assist with that. And then there's just your good old traditional, you know, sales discounts. And so those are net from the price, and we're providing those closing statements to the city so that, you know, there's accountability for landing under that 275 number.
Okay, how can I get a copy of those?
We haven't closed a home yet, so we don't have a closing statement yet. But we've been trading notes on a good accounting system and example closing statements from some of our other projects.
Okay, yeah, because that's what I'm looking for is, you know, when they come to me and say, hey, you know, I'm supposed to be able to get a $227,000 house, you know, what's the deal? I can say, okay, well, you know, because of the HUD, you know, that stuff.
Well, the 227, I think it's really important that that be given in context. That was the time when that agreement was written. And so it has gone up every year, and that's, our costs have also gone up every year, so it's all relative. So that is, that 227, it lives in the agreement, but that is a snapshot in time of what that was in 2020 when it was, you know, signed.
Madam Mayor, can I, since I'm involved in this, can I, on that, so we're talking three years difference then, right? That $48,000 increase, correct?
Pablo, can you jump up?
Pablo, yeah, if you're gonna talk long.
Sorry.
We got both mics now, here we go. Daniel, come over here.
So that, I just think it's important that we talk about facts here today, really important, actually, throughout the day. But the original agreement was 2020. We're in 23 now. So that $48,000 difference is 30-plus months difference? Is that from when it was originally written?
Yeah, the numbers come out in June. I think they're calculated based on the previous year. So, yeah, from when they've come out, right, exactly. It's been three years.
It's four years on the agreement. So the agreement, we talked about 2019 numbers.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So we've got some inflation factors and all of that stuff that.
Right, you know, we were double-digit CPI this past year. So I just think facts like that, when you're talking to constituents that come up and say, it was 227, but the cost of goods, all these things. And Lennar, you know, we've been trying to do some sales at our firm with them, but they are doing incentives. And I think that's, I want the mayor to bring up an incentive she heard about this past week with somebody being able to get more house for less money. But, you know, the tangibles are that $48,000 difference, 275 to 227, over three-plus years now. So, you know, I've got the same scale, just with CPI, the difference from 2019 to now, what that money cost would have done on, yeah. So it's, you know, we were at 11% CPI. Now we're at, I don't know, we're at 6-point-something.
Yeah, it's, there was a point in time where we were very concerned about being able to build under that threshold because of what costs have done. Fortunately, costs on the home construction side have come down. Haven't seen much savings on the development side, but home construction costs have come down materially over the last 12 months. There were some scary moments in that period of rapid inflation that we were not gonna be able to meet the price point.
Okay.
And I think council and mayor, that I've been involved. So we went to P and Z, we went through an annexation, EIC. So all those things have been, you know, there was a lot of thought, oh, it barely passed, it barely had, I barely have a lot of problems with that expression because it did, it did. I think that presentations could have been better, maybe for all involved. But once questions were asked by all of the board members, committee members from EIC to P and Z, they were satisfied with that. So it has progressed. It's been a long time coming. So I wanna make sure that those things have happened on this development. You know, there's two different takedowns here that have gotten us to this point. And with the tours that we're gonna talk about or may or may not, you know, I'm out of that as far as being able to speak in depth. But I did wanna make sure we knew what has already happened to this date. And the workshop was kind of questions that I heard from y'all and questions, you know, trying to not have it, and this is as somebody that lives at 3928 Oak Park Drive, Kerrville, Texas, Pablo Brinkman, knowing that y'all get asked things a lot of times where maybe you don't have all of the answers or great questions. Roman may have a way where we can formulate. So that's where I think, what I understood when Michael said, hey, why don't we get together? Let's have a workshop so we can answer these questions of y'all and of your constituents, of the public to find out and put things to rest. Because there's a lot of fear-mongering. But I want to, as aggressively as I can, say, this is 2050 is exactly what we want. Lennar is a partner of the city's right now on the current tract. And they have a lot of performance duties that they're gonna live by as a partner of the city of Kerrville. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Pablo, thank you. The other question that I get is the investor.
So I wanna talk about that. I talked to Judy, and I had briefly a talk. So in the real estate business, markets, those in the banking, I mean, everybody up there is in the business world. Y'all are all sitting there to the same in this audience. So the market's gonna dictate that. We're at 511 or 517 homes total on this entire deal. I know of no investor, no savvy investor, that's gonna go out here and buy any of these. If we had 32 homes, hey, Lennar, you can cap it at three. Let's keep it at 10%, something like that. So an investor that I know of, and I've talked, I deal with a lot of different kind of investors. But let's talk about what's an investor. Is an investor Roman and I going and buying three so we can profit? Well, I would say, Roman, that's not smart for us because there's other people, they're given incentives. I can't afford 5 and 1/4%. I want 9% interest. Or if I'm gonna rent it, I'd, Roman, let's go do and rehab. I'd rather do that. So, but an investor is Peterson. Corey Evans is at the hospital, is thinking about buying houses. And they're thinking about buying houses in the existing and/or this, either privately to give to the nurses because we do the, you know, with the dorms for Shriners, for the first responders. But that's an investor. So I immediately, when I heard this, went to Clifton. I said, Clifton, has any Lennar community been, and this is my vernacular, not y'all's, been handcuffed on any development on investors? And his answer was?
No, sir.
No, no. And so I pressed him, and he said, Pablo, if the city tries to dictate that we can't sell to investors, you don't ever, as a realtor, get involved or step in the way of any kind of buyer, okay? The market's gonna dictate what these are. Reef, hopefully, and they're 38 acres. They're gonna do BTRs, build to rents, down here by Cinderella at some point. And so those are gonna be build to rents, which are gonna be somebody out of an apartment, a multifamily apartment that wants to get in the house but can't quite get there potentially. But the landscape may change for them. I mean, we may have so many people that can afford to get. I don't know what the qualification is to get a home here with Lennar. But definitely, when you're three points under prime, and prime's at eight, eight and a half fixing to go, eight, seven, fives, Jeff, you know, it's gonna be north of nine probably first quarter. So that's.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's a market for rentals. I mean, we're just as hard up for rentals as we are for workforce housing. So there's definitely a market for investors to pick up some homes and use them as rental properties. I'm just wondering what the percentage of, I mean, is there a percentage built in as to how many can be, you know, investors? And how many can be, you know?
I'm gonna say one thing before Michael. I think you're flirting with something that you have no, I, that's a formulation that I don't think exists, especially in Kirtucky. We don't, you know, the market, look how many multifamily units we have coming online, coming here on the loop on things that are gonna be coming up for rent. You know, rental homes here, I just don't think the market, why would somebody go and buy one to rent? If they do, it's gonna be at market rate.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and.
Well, I just, I mean, these are questions that people are asking.
100%, no. I think, but when I say the market, I think the market's gonna take care of itself. Because if you go on MLS right now, I think I looked, and there's probably six rental units that probably start at 1,100, it can go up to like $3,200. There's one out, let's discount that, and let's discount the 1,100. Let's take that means, okay? That would be welcome if somebody would do that. But I just know, don't know of any investors that can afford to buy that. Let's say you buy it at 275, right? Unless it's a cash buy, with taxes, insurance, you know, you're gonna get a 6% return on that, Even if they bought it on cash. So the, the NOI, just the cap rate doesn't make sense.
So Brenda, one of the things, let me just quick, one of the things that, um, we've had a lot of discussions about this lately in the intervening weeks. And, and one of the things that was kind of, it just, it just piqued my interest and it made the most sense is you all are trying to solve a workforce housing issue, right? And workforce housing is both home buyers and renters. It's not just home buyers. A lot of folks can't afford it.
That's right.
They need the rental home. They can't find it. They, they need, so it, so it's a combination of both. And those rental homes are investor owned homes, right? So, you know, what we have discussed and what Lennar has animated to us is that typically they have around a thirty percent investor portfolio in their purchases, but that's not, it's not a hard and fast number, right? Uh, so I think that's dependent, depending on where you go, which developments they are, right? We know we have a workforce housing need. We know that there's, there's several industries that have folks who need homes. So we know that those folks are going to come out and buy those houses. Can we guarantee that every single one of those five hundred homes would be bought by those folks? That we can't do and that's, that therein lies what I understand to be the risk for Lennar, that they can't have a fifty homes on the books that can't sell, that just sit out there in the market.
Right.
And Judy, in, in real estate, as you know, with, with the rentals, I know of three employees at Peterson that would be more of a, in a rental capacity, but they have dogs. It's things like that. And that's where you have B two, B two Rs, you know, the build to rent capacity where it would fulfill this. Where somebody can get out of a multifamily, can get into this, may only be here for three years and then be coming. But I, I just think the more arrows in our quiver, Kerrville, the more arrows in our quiver, Roman, that we can offer out there that's at this price point, that's a rental, that's a purchase, that's a new product, that's got incentives, things like that. I mean, welcome to Subway. We've got housing in Kerrville.
Yeah. Well, and I think too, something we forget, the more that we have, the more competition there is.
Sure.
Which should help
Sure.
somewhat in that rental market.
Sure, it will.
So, uh, which is important.
I appreciate you noticing. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to expand a little bit on that. You know, Pablo mentioned it from, from the investor viewpoint, but just, you know, go bring it to the community viewpoint. As, as Michael mentioned, across our entire business of, in San Antonio, which is, you know, fifty or sixty communities, that thirty percent rings true. So we're talking about over, you know, a, a, over everything, right? Every, every submarket, every, every, every market will have a different story to tell. But, um, let's talk about these renters for a second because I, I, when this came up, I went and talked with, uh, our senior vice president of sales, trying to educate myself on, on the, the rental market, the sales market. I'm on the land acquisition side. I, I, I know a little bit about sales and a little bit about home building, but I'm really more of a land guy, uh, by, by trade. And so the, what I, what was, what was explained to me is that these folks that are, that will become renters from a workforce housing perspective, from a, from a demographic perspective, are, are they the same folks that are, are becoming buyers? They just may not have as long of a work history. Uh, they might have a, a credit issue. Right now, it's, you're, if you have under a six fifty credit score, you're not going to qualify for a loan. It's, it's a pretty high hurdle, uh, as underwriting has really tightened up. Um, and so these renters, they're, they're, they're tomorrow's buyers. This is giving them a foothold, a place to live. Um, investors know that, you know, these renters are probably going to stay with them for a year, maybe two years until they can repair their credit or, or do whatever they need, save up money. It does take, you know, it does take some liquidity to close a home. Um, and, and then, you know, the, the, those, those folks turn into buyers. And so optically, it's, it's the same folks that, that, that we're trying to attract for the workforce housing to become owners, are, are they're the same as the renters. It, it, it's just a matter of where they are in life and their ability to close a home. Um, the rents, you know, if an investor does buy the home, they're going to charge market rents. Uh, you know, rents are at all time high. Uh, it's, it's not like it's a subsidized platform or anything like that. So it is going to be, um, truly market driven. And I, I think it, it, it helps fit the need for, for, for workforce housing and attainable housing in the community.
Thank you.
Clifton, let me ask a question that you just said, since I'm in the world. Is that y'all's credit score six fifty or do you know that answer? Because, and if it is, we all sell outside. I'm taking it you will if somebody wanted to come in and do an FHA loan because you can get five eighty a credit score on FHA loan.
I am going to venture say that that is probably from our mortgage company. Yes, sir. I'm sure that the, the vast majority of our homes closed with our mortgage company. Um, but we are not exclusive. So outside lenders are welcome. Yes, sir.
I just, I just wanted to ask that. When you said six fifty, that triggered something in my little mind, so.
Well, and I've had some, some good comments on some people being able to purchase cheaper through you. Uh, maybe I should use the word purchase for less. Uh, get, they got more for their money, uh, because of the incentives that you offer. And, uh, they, they, they are very good. Now, I know our, our local lenders don't get excited about that, but, uh, but it, it does, it makes a difference. It does help. And, uh, I have been pleased with some of the reports that I've heard. So, um, would, uh, say thank you for that.
Of course. Thanks. Thank you for the feedback.
Can you let us know, so the last time, at our last regular meeting, we postponed the hearings on the annexation, I believe, and the TERS. Can you give us an update on where you are in the process of both and what the holdup was?
I can. I think I, I, uh, from, from, from my standpoint, from a staff standpoint, we wanted to get some clarity from the council on the concept of this new development before we move further with any new publications, any more hearings. Uh, because the crux of it is, you know, I think there was a big, there's a big concern about, um, the investor portion of it. And so that's a, that's a sticking point for Lennar. And so I knew we had to have, we had to have this discussion before we were going to move forward with any kind of TERS talk. And that was, that kind, that came up during, and so they don't, they're not going to annex and they're not going to purchase the, all these things are predicated on each other. So if this agreement and this agreement, then yes, we're going to close on this. And yes, we're going to annex the property. But like everybody else, if they don't happen, then the next piece wouldn't happen. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you. Is the TERS request still the same as it was before?
So we'll, you know, it will be a discussion, right? So we're going to have a public hearing and there's going to be discussion about it. So, um, that's still something that you all have a lot of weighed into on what it looks like, right? So we haven't yet had that discussion. So it's more about, are you all, today was more about, are you all amenable to the idea of the development as a workforce housing development, knowing that it will include investors in it? Because I know that's a concern, right? And if not, then, you know, it's kind of, this is, this is the time for us to ask those questions of, of Lennar and, and get y'all's answers.
So to get an answer to my question, is there, is the TERS request still the same?
Yes.
It is still the same?
Yes.
And, but y'all haven't, there hasn't been too much discussion about that between the developer, Lennar and the city yet about it?
No.
Okay.
No, based on, based on what we're talking about today.
Okay.
No changes. Sorry.
All right. One thing I want to note on the, the investor, we sit in a different seat than a Realtor would. I mean, we have a different fiduciary duty more to our community that we represent than a Realtor would either to, as an agent of the buyer or the seller. And I think keeping that in mind, the whole goal, the whole purpose we're doing this is for housing for our community members and for the workforce individuals who need that here. And so I think we're in a different situation than we would otherwise be. Including that our plan and our Kerrville twenty fifty plan provides, this is a main goal of the city. And so I think we need to be very cautious and I would be in favor of looking towards a way of putting in some type of percentage or limiting to the investors because Peterson may be an investor, but that's not a guarantee. And it's not a guarantee that no investor will come in. It's great to hear that there may not be a market for it, but that doesn't limit it and it doesn't prohibit it. And it doesn't mean that the people who are going to get these houses are only going to be the people in our community that need it. Especially considering that we're going to be considering the TERS requests. And EIC has considered requests too. So I think we need to put all that in perspective and say, what is the city getting in return for all these requests? And we sit in a different seat than any other person or entity would. So I think we need to take that into consideration when it comes to just allowing any type of investor to come in.
Well, but I would also say, uh, in, in, on the opposite side of that, Roman, that when we're looking at five hundred and some houses, um, Lennar's taking a risk also. Uh, I mean, there's, you mentioned, you know, will they, will they sell? They're, they are taking that same risk. Would, will they sell? And, uh, so I think that, I think that's something that we also need to take into consideration. So.
Can I comment, Mayor, on, on Mr. Garcia's? I, so my fiduciary, just to be clear, is I represent Shriner University. And I've been an intermediary in this to help Lennar through this, through staff, kind of negotiate being a local varmit that lives here in Kerrville, trying to get this thing done because we know we need it. So, so I don't, I'm not, yeah, I am working for Shriner. I, I, I will get compensated once and if this ever sells. Um, I'm a five oh one C three right now though. But I, again, I think I would, I would not. One thing I was going to say before, uh, when Clifton talked about concerns. Judy, correct me if I'm wrong, you were at an open house and Roman, I don't know if you were there and I don't know if Jeff was there, Joe or Brenda, but there was a Realtor that said, can investors buy? And this is where this whole thing started. Is there concern from Joe Herring about investors buying Lennar homes? Is there a, a concern from Jeff on that? Because what we'll do here in Kerrville is concerns get blown up. And we go chase these concerns and we spend time, energy, effort. I think, Roman, we look to, Mr. Garcia, we look to other communities that have great counsel, that have same fiduciary duties that you just said, that have somebody that says, listen, I am here for my workforce hours, housing. It may not be called twenty fifty, it may be called twenty twenty in Beltway or something, but there's got to be a way that we can look to others working with a partner that y'all have right now to do that versus us chase this, this mystery Warren Buffett coming in, buying every home in Kirtucky thing. So I really, I think let's focus on what there is versus what there isn't. When you have five hundred plus homes, I think you work in possibly some language that staff works in. But you've got somebody who's bringing something that nobody else is going to bring. If, if we're, if we're not going to aggressively go forward with this and get this thing, get on with the movie, then we need to all just say, you know what, we're closed for business because this is what we wanted. And y'all put your faith in property that you gave Lennar and had certain things. Shriner is doing the same thing, putting their faith into Lennar to launch so many other things. So if we could just concentrate on what there is, because I know that one comment and the next thing I know, I heard all the councils fired up about investors. I'm like, all of councils fired up about investors? Where are these investors? So let's concentrate on what there is. Protect yourselves. Do your duties, Roman, Mr. Garcia. But let's try to lend, go to Lennar, the largest home builder in the frigging free world, on what they do and try to work with Kerrville. Thank you.
Okay, just, just curious, how'd you hear that we were all concerned about the investor part?
Uh, Michael Hornus told me that council is concerned, council is concerned. And I said, what can I do to help? And he said, and that's where we started a week or two ago about doing this workshop. And I said, let's roll up the sleeves, whatever we need to do to put it out there. Because we don't want, Roman, it to get to standing room only and people start, you know, bring something up that y'all aren't prepared for. Because this is definitely something that y'all need to be, you know, vetted and be very comfortable with. And what you're going to do, you'll hear everybody, but you need to say, listen, we've worked with the developer, we've worked with this, we've answered these questions. So that's where it came from.
Okay. No, and that's, that's fair. We've had several discussions about this project in executive session, but that's the only time we've had them in. And so information coming out of there, being presented to the public was surprising. I wasn't sure how that was coming out from closed, closed session to an open session meeting, information we discussed.
I can speak to that for you. And I received an email from Clifton authorizing Pablo as a representative on their behalf as the local portion of it. So in that vein, that was part of that discussion.
I want to repeat what, uh, Mr. Garcia has said because I believe most of it. And here's why. We have a public policy goal of attainable housing. That's been clearly stated since the twenty fifty plan. And we are using incentives to help lower the cost to those home buyers. Those incentives are public resources. They're grants from VIC and a possible TERS. Using those public resources to provide lower prices to investors, I think is the problem in that as Mr. Garcia says, we represent a different, we sit at a different chair. We don't have any skin in the game. I'm not getting compensated from Shriner. I'm not making a, a profit on the houses I sell. I am supposed to be, I am supposed to be very responsible with public funds. On this council, I have another duty. I sit on the IC board. So the grant that would be given for this project is also something I have to consider. So, Lennar, you think we're going to be overrun with investors trying to buy homes that have been, that have had incentives that from the public, uh, resources?
No, sir, I do not. Um,
Why not?
Well, a, a number of reasons. We, we do not market to investors. I mean, they're, they're out there. I mean, anybody could be an investor. But we, we market towards, you know, people obtaining, or people aspiring to obtain a home, uh, which are usually young families and, and probably falls in the category of, of the workforce housing need, uh, here in Kerrville. Um, so we, there's no special marketing to investors. I don't think from a practical standpoint, investor is going to pay as much as, as somebody who is going to use the home, uh, themselves. Um, it's an investment, right? So they're going to need a discount. We're already shooting the gap pretty, pretty tight here between the ceiling that we're, we're voluntarily placing on our homes uh, and then just our overall cost. We've, uh, already made concessions on the home site sizes themselves, which would help drive down costs. Um, we've, uh, made, uh, oh shoot, I had another point. What was the home site sizes?
Variation in design? Was that another one?
No, sir. I think, I may have been thinking of the, well, the EIC grants a little bit different animal because it's those two big collector roads that are on the, the major thoroughfare. But, uh, I, I guess,
We reduced the size from the twenty five wide.
Right.
Discount, we took all those away.
Right, yeah. Cause that land plan was about seven hundred homes. Yes, sir. So, so I guess my, my point is that we, we're, we're, we're trying to be, be good stewards and, and, and fill that need appropriately. But to, to just completely remove a, a, a segment that's right now thirty percent of our, our home sales, not, may not be here locally, but, but is, uh, you know, you know, I guess globally, for lack of a better word, for here, for our division, uh, is very concerning to us. We don't, we have the, the price ceiling already. We've got now some, some, some things that are pinching us on cost by way of density and home sizes and things like that. And so, um, it's very, very concerning to, to remove that can imply, you know, potential buyer, uh, I guess potential buyers. But I do not see it being overrun. Um, that's, that's, that's a different animal. Yes, sir.
You can see our concern. We are using public money, public resources to help bring the prices down. Hopefully for attainable housing for families, for workers, for nurses, for teachers, for firefighters, for policemen. And if the, if those houses are all going to be snapped up because of those incentives, what have we done? We've, we've invested public resources so someone can make a buck.
I, I, I think so. I, I see what you're saying. I, I, or at least I think I can see what you're saying. But some of those folks can also be renters as well. And I guess that is the, the feedback I'd be curious to hear from, from council is the concern, the, the term investor, right, is, is, you know, is concerning because it has the word investment in it, right? Somebody is investing and they're taking advantage of the public funds that you mentioned. So I, I completely understand that. Optically, that's concerning. But the, in actuality, it's going to be somebody who's offering one of those nurses, firefighters, police officers an opportunity to live in a single family detached home that they may not otherwise have. And so, um, I, I see what you're saying, but at the same time, I, I think it's, it's tough to draw a line in the sand and say, you can buy and you can't buy. Um, that's, that's where I struggle.
Okay, well, I struggle with, uh, using public resources for, to, to build investor homes. Uh, Mr. Garcia, I don't know that I, I spoke well of your point, but I was trying to understand what you were saying.
I think you were spot on with what I was.
We don't have skin in the game. We're volunteers. And, uh, we're going to try to do the best thing for Kerrville, not for Lennar, not even for Shriner. We don't represent Shriner. We're going to try to do the best for Kerrville. And if it turns out that we've, we've squandered those resources, we'll be held to pay.
Let me make a comment, Sheldon, or Clifton, I'm sorry. Cause I look at it two different ways when we say investor. I look at it as I have real estate investments. I'm not going to go to the project and buy a house. But an investor, if it was Sid Peterson Hospital came in and bought six homes so they could allow their employees to live there or charge them a minimal rent. I can understand that as an investor or coming. I can understand that as an investor, or coming in, me coming in and buying. And my point, my question that I have on this is, you know, Sid Peterson has 1,232 employees. They have employees that drive in from Junction, I'm sure they would like to live here. If I came in to buy a home as an investor, individual, I'm gonna buy it, I'm gonna rent it. Are there different tiers? Like if I just came in and said, I'm gonna buy a house, I'm gonna pay cash for it. Do I not get the rebates or incentives or down payment, well, it won't be any down payment assistance. But a discount or rebates from y'all if I pay cash for the home? Or if I tell you my intention is to rent the home, I'm not gonna live there, it's not gonna be my primary residence? Is there a different price point for something like that? Or do y'all even ask? I mean, it's, you can't really, well, yeah, you really can ask, because you gotta know what you're doing, you know. I look at it from my point as a lender, I gotta know if it's gonna be your primary residence or investment home. Because it changes, it changes the ballgame. But from y'all's side, I don't know how your mortgage company works, or if somebody just comes in and strokes you a check. My thing is, I agree with Councilmember Herring and Councilmember Garcia. We gotta be careful with our funds that we use, but I also realize we need houses. We've got to have houses in Kerrville for our employees. Chief McCall, I know that he's had struggles with law enforcement, driving three hours to come to work here. You know, we have doctors, we have young nurses that can't afford to live in Kerrville. So I'm for the project, but I'd like to know, is there a different price point for somebody to come in that's gonna pay cash? Or how do y'all work that? And I'm gonna kind of refer to your, or defer to your attorney here on that as well. Because I know in my world, Mayor, you know this as well, you kind of get into a sticky little subject there, it's called fair lending. So if it's good for one, it's gotta be good for all. So I'm just, a little clarification, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I, I believe I understand your question and I'm, I'm thinking through it. I would imagine, just as you mentioned on the lending side, part of that process is, is gonna, is going to vet out if this is a secondary home, or, or if you're, you know, if it's gonna be a, a homestead. From the Lennar perspective, you know, if somebody came in as a cash buyer and just said, hey, I've got a stack of money here, I don't know if we would ever vet if they were going to be an investor or not. A lot of people buy a home, live in it for a couple of years, and then, then they rent it. It's, it's a spectrum. And I think that's where some of the concern lies, is where you draw, draw that line. But, but going back to your question, if it didn't come up on the lending, I, I, I think we would offer them the same, same incentives, right? I, I don't think that would change. I don't think there's a different incentive package for different home buyer profiles. It's really, at the time, needed for, for, for the home. And, and that would, what I would say to that is, if, if the investor needed the incentives, probably not gonna get the home. You know, we're not gonna go negotiate. We're, we're, we have a, a list of qualified folks right now in Ridgeland who, who are, you know, bidding, you know, at the edge of their seat to buy a home. We were gonna call them first, we're not gonna open it up to, to an investor. Where, where investors would come in looking for an opportunity would be, hey, we haven't sold a house in six months. We got 30 homes sitting out there, we're coming up to the end of our fiscal year, and, and we've gotta, we've gotta move some inventory. Oh, that was the other thing I was gonna mention, was, was in the E I C agreement, we're required to build a certain number of homes every year. Well, if we can't sell, if we're not selling them, we're just gonna be hard to time just keep on buying. And so that, that was the other item that I wanted to mention, with it, that is, you know, that's keeping us to a certain cadence, a certain pace. And we have to be able to sell them. That, that's, that's a concern from our perspective.
Can I answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's one more thing. I know it feels like we're putting you, the five of us are putting you on the spot. But we've got almost 25,000 people here that will put us on the spot. Okay, and we have to ask you these things.
Yes, sir.
I actually ate my lunch at, at the new Ridgeland, at the cul-de-sac, watching everybody work. You know, it was, it was amazing just watching the machine go, right? And I'm appreciative of what you're doing here. At the same time, you know, I don't represent you. And I have to ask these questions. I, I, I think Peterson isn't, as defined as an investor would be great. I think that's wonderful. I don't know.
That was just hypothetical, so.
But I don't want to subsidize a, a product for an investor.
Yes, sir. No, and I, I appreciate this conversation. I was looking forward to it, to, to come here and have this conversation. And I do want to pull that thread about subsidizing for investors, but, but yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just wanna say that Kerrville has an inventory problem. That's what we've got. And right now, there are husbands and wives that are searching for just a simple room to rent, because it is that bad in Kerrville. When a husband and wife get on the internet and start searching for families that have a spare bedroom, that's kind of an eye-opener as to how big the problem really is. We need inventory, and what I see is that those people who are now searching for a room to rent might get in that apartment, because the people in that apartment might be able to land in one of those homes, whether they're renting that home or whether they're buying that home. So the problem is not investors, the problem is inventory. And that's where our focus should be, is getting inventory here for people to live.
So I, I would just articulate that the only way that you can have rentals in there is if those are investments. Whether they are investors such as a, a single individual, or an investment group that buys a block of them, the only way that any of those single-family homes would be for rent is through investors.
And there are a lot of people that cannot afford to buy a home. They can't come up with that 20% or 25% down.
It's not easy.
But they can sure rent something.
Yeah, they can.
Yes, sir, I was just curious to get your thoughts. You mentioned the, the, the public funds and, and I just, like I said, I want to get your thoughts. The, the E I C agreement is, is really for those, is for those big roads, right? And so that's whether, I mean, you know, whoever's living in the homes, or whatever the homes are, that's, that's, that public infrastructure that I think is appropriate corresponds with, with the agreement. And then the TERS, that's all revenue that's generated from the taxes paid by the individuals living there. And so I, and, and that, from my perspective, which I understand is, is on one side of the fence. It, it seems like it's a self-sustaining situation, where the, the tax dollars are gonna help bring the cost of the homes down. The infrastructure for E I C is, is public infrastructure off the major thoroughfare plan. It does not seem to me that we're, we're, we're taking public funds away from, from another opportunity. And I'd be curious to know if, if I'm looking at it the right way.
Well, if we're using incentives, they're lowering your costs, you're not building those roads, correct? You're not, you're not having to build the infrastructure. And so that cost is not, it's not your cost. So the cost of the homes is lower. Go ahead.
Hey, go ahead, let me introduce Daniel Ortiz, this gentleman who helps us with the TERS documents.
Apologize, Councilman, for interrupting there, but I think, to add to that part of the conversation in terms of the public incentives, 100% we understand, and you're doing your due diligence as we speak. What I would add to that conversation in terms of what the public incentives are, that the TERS, the fundamental concept is taxes that are being paid in that the city wouldn't otherwise receive, getting reimbursed. So the city's whole, you're not actually dispensing any money that you were otherwise getting in terms of those public incentives. So yes, it is a reimbursement.
The value of the land goes up significantly when you put 500 homes on it.
And so Lennar, for the time being, and then eventually home buyers, whoever they might be, are paying those taxes in, which again, without that development, would equate to no taxes coming from that property. And depending what the revenue share is eventually, the city's not actually, for example, foregoing something that they were paying for in a previous budget, cuz they can't afford to anymore, cuz they're participating in this TERS. It funds itself, is my point.
On this side of the fence, we're looking at as an investment. And will increase our sales tax revenues, it'll eventually increase all of our property tax revenues, but it's an investment. And the investment is for a public policy, for attainable housing. That's the whole, that's the whole ball of wax for us.
Yeah, understood, and I think we're taking that very seriously. From a practical perspective, I think that the, really the can of worms in terms of what an investor may or may not be is your goal about providing attainable housing, workforce housing. The end user, by and large, in their experience, is the same. It's the nurse who has a credit issue that would otherwise buy. It's not sort of a big corporation that buys homes and sits on them. They're gonna rent them out in that, in that world. And that person is otherwise looking for other avenues, or maybe looking at a whole different city altogether. So the end user is meeting your goal, I think, by and large, providing that attainable workforce housing.
Mr. Herring, one other thing is, on an investor in a matured market, that's where an investor can go in and do that, and kind of, kind of control it. Because we have 500 unbuilt homes right now, that's where I think this is a little bit early. And I understand, and thank you for, I think, what you said, Roman, I savvy, Jeff, I savvy. I understand, Joe, that you have fiduciary to me, everybody in this, in this town. But because we're not at, this isn't matured market, we have a blank canvas, there's 511 homes. There's gotta be some kind of precedence or something that's, that, that has, has come up before, Michael, in this. I, I just, I just know my knowledge in, 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 in real estate and in business. And in a matured market, that's where an investor is gonna go in and take blocks of things and try to make the most money they can by fulfilling a certain need, whether it's in urban, or whether it's commercial, or if it's residential. You know, we have a lot of people that, every one of us know that if, there's a group that buys homes here in Kerrville, but they fulfill a need. There's, there's a group that has 27 rentals. You know, Matt Sletton's got clients at over 30 rentals here. But it's always, and it, and it's the gamut. It's from the, on Fairway, small little condos in, in Comanche, to things on Garden Street, to deferred maintenance, to, to new builds, and they have all of those. But the market dictates what they can get. And I was just looking at rental rates, and rental rates are at an all-time high right now. And it's scary of what you're getting in our MLS, what I was looking at, what, what we have. And there's not a lot to pick from.
Well, 30% of 500 homes, if my math serves, is about 150 homes that, if your other trends hold here, would be purchased by investors here in Kerrville. If, if 30% of your homes go to investors.
So I would, I would try to argue that, and I, and I, I understand what you're saying, that 30% of those homes would end up being mostly rental homes, is the way that, that I would frame that. And the other thing, I was, so as, as I was, as we've talked about this, and began to look around at all the other TERS that are residential in nature, that are there to solve that workforce housing issue, it's the larger policy goal, you are, and you, every one of them are investing public funds. And they all have the understanding that a portion of that will go to serve essentially a rental market that will serve that community and those nurses. But it's hard, it's hard to swallow it when you, when it's, I totally, I understand exactly what you're saying.
That's rare for me.
It is, but we gotta, we gotta get there every now and again.
We keep saying that the invested property, whatever we're gonna, again, define investors as, are gonna be rentals. Do we know that for sure? Is that guaranteed? Because they could buy and turn right back around and sell it at a higher price. Is that correct?
Well, they could, but that's also a market-driven thing. So the, the challenge in that is that you have a-
But it's possible, is, I'm trying to get a-
Not really, because if a home's, so if, if, if two homes are, are equal, same, same square footage, same size lot, this house sells for $275,000, this house is not going to sell for $350. It, it's the exact same house. So those homes are, are not going to sell for different prices.
That's if there's another house available, that's if that house is not already bought up by that investor, that's if that house has not already been sold and is not already occupied. So it's, it's, there's a wide variety of possibilities. It's, it's not impossible, and I, I know that, so.
It's also the same for a home buyer, right? For, for a nurse who buys that home and turns around in a year and sells it.
Act like it's not impossible. It's possible.
But also against the appraisal.
We're not suggesting that Lennar homes are fungible.
If I could just add real quickly, I think, if I could just add real quickly, Councilman, point's fair. There are a lot of scenarios that are possible. Are they likely? And so when you're negotiating a transaction, focusing in on the ones that are likely, or the ones that, you know, where you can meet, meet somewhere. But the bigger point is focusing in back onto what I think the Councilman was getting at. In any scenario, I just wanna be crystal clear, in the TERS, 100% of those taxes are getting paid. The city's getting taxes that it would otherwise not get. Meanwhile, the nurse is getting to either buy or home, rent the home. Those are the big end goals, and they're being met. So I just wanna emphasize that. The public subsidy is not discounting the taxes that the city's paying, or the city's receiving at all. Those taxes are still due, whether it's a quote-unquote investor, whether it's a buyer, whether it's renter, those taxes are all getting paid every year. So I just wanna make that clear. And so you're not necessarily, or really at all, you're not in a situation where this year's budget, you have constituents telling you, my street needs to be repaired. And then next year's budget, you have to choose between funding this agreement and fixing that street. I mean, the money's still, you're getting, whatever money was coming into the city is still coming into the, into the, into the city's coffers. This agreement, the public subsidy, is funding itself. Those taxes that are coming from that community are going to reimburse to help get those price points. It's not costing the city, in other words, anything else outside of that. So.
Well, that's a true point. I think what we have to look at too is what was the goal? And the goal in the plan, and the plan was not to receive additional revenue or increase our tax base. Our goal was to make sure we had housing for our community. And so if the goal was, we're going inside to get a project or development that is gonna increase, you know, our revenue we get in property taxes, absolutely, this is the way to go. But I think we really have to look on the flip side, and it's not that goal that we're trying to meet. It's the goal of making sure we have the housing for our community.
So you can't have one without the other. That's, that's kind of a, a positive that you can, you can look at as a positive. I look at it as a positive, Councilman Garcia, that you are gonna get more revenue, that we are gonna have more tax dollars to, for our beautiful city. Now, I wanted to clarify something. Yes, there is ways that it could happen. I've sold two homes, Roman, to people that couldn't qualify. One single mother, husband, were under credit, had credit in the 400s, terrible. I have one that had an addiction problem. I had an investor that bought a home, sold the home on owner financing. That's another way to get it done. So that is a big thing in our community a, as well. I've got two tangible things. If you said, could it happen to Michael, so I don't think so. It could, cuz I didn't wanna, you're right, but this is right too, and Mr. Garcia is right. So that is something that happened, and, and I've, that's just me on two separate ones. And so that's, that's, again, that's just fulfilling a need.
There could be investors like parents buying a house.
100%, these, these two weren't. These were two investors that I knew that one, one girl couldn't do. She was in a bad situation, great. She had terrible, made a lot of mistakes in her life, but has done great work. Another had been in addiction. We, we help a lot of first-time home builders, Colleen does, home buyers that have never bought a home and go through and work with a lot of great banks and through private lending. And sometimes that's what it takes to get started. And we all know, we all fall short, we all need grace. I know I do. Roman, I know you're saying, need extra dose, but, but uh-
I didn't say that, for the record.
Yeah, for the record. You didn't say it, I did. But I just think, this is opportunity, man. This is Kerrville 20, this is 50. This is what we all got on the tables and were there and drawing and infill, and the opportunity. And this development is walking distance to three schools. K through 12, K through 12, walking distance, walking distance. Lennar said, when we were up and Michael was in there, when they had their engineer, it's as if Kerrville built the schools around what we could build. It couldn't be any better for them. Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll have more questions.
I do wanna say that we're very supportive of what Lennar is doing. I mean, I walk out there and watch the Ridgeland people work. We also need to warn council that even if we approve something within the next few months, weeks, whatever our schedule is, it's gonna be years before that first house comes, and it's not gonna be a $275,000 house, it'll be a $325,000 house. Cuz the HUD thing's gonna keep.
Hopefully, the salaries will keep up. I don't know that they will, but they certainly, it's, it's always hard for me when I look at- at that and go, well, does everybody have enough money now for another $15,000?
Well, you know, that, but you bring up a good point, because I went to, many of us did today, went to a healthcare conference. And right now, there's about $124 million worth of salaries that are going into Peterson employees, Peterson professionals. And if they could live here, they would spend that salary here. And I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Good, yeah, good point.
Okay, anyone, any other questions, thoughts, comments?
I appreciate the workshop, I think we needed to have this.
Thank you very much.
Slight tussle.
No, it's good, it's good discussion. I was, you know, being the, being the go-between, it was, it was nice to get everybody in the room.
Well, and we, we thank you guys for your patience, your understanding, and I think it's time that we move into executive session and do some more discussing, so.
Appreciate the opportunity. Please, if anyone else comes up, just let me know.
Thank you. All right, who would like to make a motion? I'll make the motion, we will move into a executive session on 551.071, 551.087. Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor? And we will recess at 5:11 to executive session. We will go upstairs.
Thank you, ma'am.